The quorum. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Bellas Falls Union High School District's School Board Meeting, Monday, September 28th. Is there any adjustments to the agenda? Mr. Pratt or Mr. Hosden?
I have none.
No, Molly, I'm good.
Perfect.
Molly may raise an issue here very quickly. There has been discussion about the possibility of a motion to encourage basketball as a winter sport. And I think that may come up under discussion later, but that, I imagine, might be considered for action by the high school board as encouragement, if not an endorsement.
Okay, well, we might be able to encourage, but it's not on the agenda right now. So we do have a status on fall sports, and I do believe that Mr. Hosden is going to speak about winter sports. Can we review and approve board minutes on September 14th? David?
I move to approve the minutes of September 14th, Molly.
There's a motion on the table to approve the minutes as written. Is there a second?
I can second. Margot.
Thank you, Margot. All those in favor approving the minutes as written? You can't do that. Let me name you off here.
Molly, I have just one quick correction. It's minor. My last name is spelled G-H-I-A. It's just...
Yep. We want to make it right. There's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes as written, but to correct Margot's last name to G-H-I-A. Jack?
Uh, yes, I'm trying to get a call coming in, sorry.
Okay. Margot?
Yes.
Deb, right?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And have we got Steve Fine yet?
Yes.
Thank you, Steve. Communication and public comments. Check the chat, see if anybody's in there. I don't know if there is.
Yeah, I don't have anything in chat right now, Molly.
Jason Terry is raising his hand.
I see Jason Terry. Go ahead, Jason, you've got the mic.
How's everybody doing?
You're awesome.
Good. Uh, so, uh, last month, I came before you guys with, uh, this seems like a month, but I think it might only have been a couple of weeks ago. But I, we were discussing, um, Phase Three in sports and kids getting back to school and what was going to happen. So, uh, some stuff has happened since that last meeting. So, uh, a lot of parents are very excited about the Phase Three. So, I'm, I'm, I'm coming before you tonight and asking the board for the Bellas Falls Union High School. Please act on this tonight, that on October 15th, the state, along with the VPA, is coming out with winter guidance for athletics. If Bellas Falls Union High School numbers of COVID cases are still below the standard for COVID cases, I would like to direct the school principal and/or the superintendent to write the state, um, along with the VPA, that the Bellas Falls Union High School plans to participate in full, traditional winter sports. And I'm not sure if that needs to come from the board or, or who, but I, I really want, I really would like to see as a parent, um, you know, that if the numbers continue to stay low, that we try to do something for the winter athletics. Um, you know, October 15th is a really, really early time to be deciding if you're going to cancel basketball, when basketball traditionally doesn't start until well after December. So, and I know right now they can do three-on-three basketball outside, and I'd hate to see the kids outside in the middle of the winter, three-on-three basketball outside. But if those are the rules, I fully anticipate that the Union High School follow those rules. So, um, I would like to see traditional winter sports. I'm hoping you guys can discuss it and maybe act on it if you can. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other public comments? Is there anything, Chris?
Don't have any. I don't have anything in the chat unless there is someone who wants to, um, raise and speak.
Molly, this Deb. I have a question about what Jason Terry just said. Um, he put it in public comment, but how can the board discuss it or where can the board discuss it? That's my question.
Um, I was going to bring up Sports Under Principles Report, and that's certainly a place where we can, where I could talk about that.
Thank you, Chris. That sounds good.
Thank you, Chris.
I, I see no other communication or public comments. I don't believe there's any policies. Is that correct, Chris Pratt?
Oh, that is correct.
Sports Report.
Okay, so, number of topics there. As I have done in the past, oftentimes when I produce a written one, I like to read it because board members have been given access to that, but the viewing audience has not. And so rather than me just paraphrase and summarize, if you'll bear with me, I know you all know how to read, but, um, again...
No, I think it's good for the public. Thank you.
So, update on school reopening. Thus far, after three weeks of school, the implementation of our hybrid reopening plan is going very well, or at least as well as can be expected. We've encountered no significant or unexpected challenges. Staff and students have adjusted reasonably well to the many new restrictions and expectations associated with a school reopening that has been done in accordance with the guidance provided by the Vermont AOE and the Vermont Department of Health. We've had only a handful of issues with mask-wearing compliance, and so it really hasn't been a problem. As of this past Saturday, the state has transitioned the step level from Step Two to Step Three. As noted in the document, A Strong and Healthy Start, Safety and Health Guidance for Reopening Schools Fall 2020, which is kind of the playbook or the bible for our reopening of schools, it's all the news that's fit to print on that. Step Two is defined as, "Schools are open for in-person instruction with enhanced physical distancing measures." While Step Three is defined as, "Schools are open for in-person instruction with distancing measures." As you can see, there is not an easily recognized difference between the two, making it difficult to discern a clear path into Step Three. Additionally, the body of the 33-page document provides very little additional guidelines for the difference between Step Two and Step Three, actually, and I printed them out if I needed to go to them. But of those 33 pages, there are only eight pages that even have a reference to Step Three, particularly relative to Step Two. In those few places where Step Two and Step Three are referenced together, guidelines essentially say, if you can, when possible, keep the same safety measures in Step Three as you have been using in Step Two. I will be meeting with the BFUHS Reopening Task Force tomorrow to identify areas for loosening up restrictions while maintaining the expectations found in that document. There are a few things that we're going to be able to do to loosen things up. We've been using a single-direction hallway, which was recommended, and we feel like we've got enough clearance and enough space to go in two directions, which may sound like small potatoes to the folks listening here, but that's been one of those things that people have been asking for early on. In terms of getting more students in the building, we are still bound by the six-feet distance between, um, the, the desks and the students in the classroom. That's something of our limiting factor for us. So what we are looking to do is to, we are identifying some students who are struggling with the remote end of our hybrid, and we are looking to give them the opportunity for four days instead of the two days that go with our cohort approach. That's at least a step-wise approach to getting more students into the building. We, of course, have been able to play athletics, so that's another difference between Step Two and Step Three. And let me see here. And we are going to make more extra help opportunities available at the beginning of the day, which also is a loosening of some of the restrictions that we've been working under before. That's my update on school reopening. I've got four more topics here, but I think it makes sense for me to take some questions along the way as we hit these topics.
Does anyone have any questions for Chris? Priscilla? So we're on, we're on school reopening. That's what we're on right now.
Um, with the relaxed requirements, I'm not quite understanding why you wouldn't have room for all of the students to do the four-day, because at the beginning you had told us that you had measured and there was space. And with a bunch of students going to VTVLC instead of to the high school, doesn't that make more space for students? I mean, how many classes really would be involved that you couldn't...
Um, I, so apparently what happened, Priscilla, um, as the, um, the schedule, the master schedule changed and students' numbers changed, there was this balancing out of classes. I don't know that it was necessarily done purposefully, but, um, back when I spoke to you before, there were fewer classes that were going to need to move to a different location. That number has gone up significantly. So I basically have four locations where I can spread people out if they have larger sections. There's creating, turning the library into a teaching space. There's the auditorium, which is far from ideal, because in order to make that work, people are spread out all over the place. We have the, um, the two cafeterias. And then now if we are going to make, the other thing we're doing is the gym is going to be available for, um, gym activities when they can't go outside. So that kind of makes that a difficult space to use. But the bottom line is, I've got about, um, well, there are four blocks in the day. I've got, um, four places to move people, and I've got more than four needs to move on at least half of those blocks. So I just want to let you know, Priscilla, I've been crunching the numbers. It's additionally, some of those classes that would have to move would be science classes, and it's one thing to move a class that has less of a need for the things in its area, like lab, labs, um, equipment, and as opposed to moving, let's say, an English class, that might be a little bit easier. So, um, we're still crunching those numbers. It's not looking good for that right now, though.
Okay, but you're going to open it up to as many as you possibly can, then, is what I'm hearing.
So, again, piecemeal-wise, we're starting with looking at those students who struggle remotely. And by the way, I did a survey of staff that covered a range of territory in moving this Step Two to Step Three. One of the greater stressors of the staff are those students who remotely aren't engaging or aren't being successful. So I see us doing a lot of good by starting there as we bring more students in, and then we'll see what that gets us. We want to do it, we want to do it carefully.
Sounds good. And this will start next week, I'm assuming, if you're starting?
Tomorrow is when I'm meeting with my task force, and that will give us an opportunity to start identifying those students who would most benefit from that. Hopefully by next week, yes.
Sounds good. Thank you. I, I'm glad to hear that you're, you're working on it and trying. That's, that's great for our students.
Jack, you're next.
Yes, thank you. Hold on just a second. I have to fill that. Yes, uh, the, as interesting as this is, again, we have a policy that we put in place to have a hybrid model for six weeks, um, and it was at the SU level. I think this is a great discussion to have, but it probably should happen before the SU board, both mindful that it is their responsibility to set curriculum parameters and that we have already set in, in place this six-week program. I think that it would be most unfair to ask, A, it would be improper to have this board any more than any of the town boards or district boards to suddenly vote to change the program, because that's not a role. And two, I think that even at the SU level, it would be inadvisable to ask, uh, that board to change the rules for the next four weeks. I think it's hard enough to put these programs into place without asking our, our administrators to jump through hoops every time we have a meeting. I fully get the enthusiasm of some of my colleagues to resume regular classes, but I also think it's important that we have a, a program that people are capable of running, and we're not changing it every time we get a report. The, uh, the, uh, Stage Three, as Chris has said, is materially not really all that different from Stage Two. You know, a couple of feet here and being able to open up the cafeteria does not change the world, uh, and we need to bear that in mind. That's all I got.
Anyone else have any questions or comments on the reopening of school before we move on to the next item? I think you're clear, Chris. I don't see anything.
Next topic.
I'm sorry, Priscilla's going to run back up. Go ahead, Priscilla.
Uh, David, who is chair of our WNASU board, and he's on here, he can comment, but this is a board, um, right to look at that. And the fact that Chris is looking at and helping those students that are struggling is really a feather in his cap, and I don't think any of us would want to stand in the way of his doing that. Because that, um, document by the others, I know the Rockingham Board voted that it would, would happen as soon as possible, not waiting for the six weeks necessarily. So, Jack, that's, that's really something that, when he responded to this, should keep in mind that it is a board, and each school can do what is best for their students.
With all due respect, the law is what it is, and the charter is what it is, and I, we have to adhere to both. You know, I, again, I, I love, prep is good. We like prep, and I applaud all of our administrators for prepping, because there's a very good chance we'll be able to move eventually. But I'm, what I'm suggesting is individual constituent boards don't have a veto over the SU board, it's the other way around. And that's just a process. You make this argument before that SU board, you may be successful, but let's make it where you're supposed to. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, we all set?
One last thing. Yep. My comment between the two of these, these two people with opposing views is simply that it's important, no matter what, if things are improving and we feel positive about it, we have to make that known as to the board members who are part of the SU, to make sure that that becomes unilateral. However, there will be pushback from other schools who will not feel the same as the high school, and that will put us at odds.
Thank you, Deb. Chris, let's try to go to the next one.
Next one, follow-up on a private photo shoot that involved BFUHS football players. At the last school board meeting, a concern was raised by a board member about some pictures that he had seen that involved high school football players, members of the senior class closer than six feet from each other, actually right up against each other without masks on. These pictures were taken on Hadley Field as a private photo shoot by a parent of one of these senior boys. This was not an organized school event, nor did it happen during school hours or during the time for after-school activities. No BFUHS staff member was present or even aware that this was planned or that it had happened until it was brought to our attention by a board member. While we certainly hope for compliance with the state of Vermont's safety guidelines by all Vermonters, particularly those associated with our school, for example, wearing masks in public when social distancing is not possible, we certainly know that we, as a school, cannot control the actions of family members of BFUHS students when they are not at school during non-school hours. Even with that reality in mind, and upon hearing of this incident, I did direct all coaches to tell their players that whenever they are in uniform and public, they need to follow all of the expected COVID-19 safety expectations, including the wearing of masks when social distancing cannot be maintained. It is our desire that they follow these expectations, even when they are not representing our school, either officially or unofficially. Questions?
Anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Hosden?
Uh, Chris, it's water over the dam, and as far as I'm concerned, that's where we leave it. I think it does need to be said, however, that, uh, students in colleges and in private schools have been expelled for this kind of thing and have been thrown off teams for this kind of thing. So, uh, it's not a matter of, oh, gosh, of our students who are in uniform, all lining up, smashed together without, uh, without masking is none of our concern. It kind of is our concern. It sounds like you've got it under control. It sounds like the coaches have got it under control. But I think it's important that we set an example, because a lot of people have been filing those. We had a fire department file those the other day at a parade. This stuff happens, and we really need to do whatever we can as an institution to set an example and discourage inappropriate behavior that puts other people's health at risk.
Anyone else have any comments about this?
One of the, I have one. This Deb.
Yes, Deb.
My comment is that this was school property, and the public should be aware that is school property. It is not a private playground or a public playground where anyone and everyone can be. So it's representative of the school. So I'm not, this is not, I'm not putting this on this high school itself, I'm putting on the public, knowing that this is high school property, and they have to be respectful, like, just like no smoking on school property, no wearing of not, not, no, going unmasked on school property is not appropriate as the protocols are already set. Public needs to be aware that it is school property they're abusing. That was it. Thanks.
Anyone else? So I think it was lesson learned, and it, you know, this is a, this is really different times, and no matter how hard we try to cross our Ts, sometimes we don't, you know, we don't even, we're never going to get it all the first time. So I, kudos to the school for taking charge after something was brought to their attention. And I think, my looks of everybody, we're all set. Nobody's got any other comments? Okay, Chris, it's you. Thank you.
Information on shipping costs for student planners. At the last board meeting, a board member raised a concern about the cost of shipping for the student planners for this school year. The cost that the school was charged for delivery of 520 planners, typically they come in boxes of 40 or so, was $478. When I asked Mr. Brody about this, and he's the one, it's, the student planners are his, his baby, he acknowledged that when he signed off on the purchases, he recalled noting the bottom line for the overall purchases, which was not different from the previous year, but he did not recall specifically noting the shipping cost when he approved the purchase. I then directed Mr. Brody to reach out to the company for an explanation. Through that conversation, it became clear that the charge was approximately three times what it had been in the past. When queried on this excessive increase, representative noted that the company had changed hands since we last ordered planners, and that part of the financial issue for the previous owners was that they had been undercharging for shipping and losing money as a result. Mr. Brody responded by continuing to note that the charge was still excessive based upon typical industry standards, and pressed them for some sort of resolution to correct this overcharging for shipping. Company then agreed to correct the matter by refunding to the school district half of the cost of shipping. We expect to receive a check from the company in the amount of approximately $239. When we receive this check, we will report that to the board and send the check to the business office or processing. Again, the issue was John looked at the bottom line, it matched what he had seen in the past, and did not scrutinize beyond that, and we have learned our lesson from that. Questions?
Anyone have any questions or comments on this, Free Judge? Or the planners? Mr. Pratt?
Would just like to say, Chris, thanks for the follow-up. I appreciate the, like, work.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the next one, Chris.
Uh, number four, current status of fall athletics. As a result of the transition from Step Two to Step Three in the state's plan for reopening schools, which officially occurred on Saturday, we can now compete with other schools in inter-scholastic athletics. We hosted our first contest on Saturday, and, uh, except for the final score, we lost, the plan for conducting such events went well. All participants and fans followed the rules for social distancing and the wearing of masks, and the crowd size was well-controlled through a ticketing system in which each player gets two tickets for family members. We measured off properly-distanced seating areas and painted markings in the fan areas to support social distancing. Uh, we are optimistic that all events will go as smoothly, especially once people grow accustomed to this new normal for sporting events. We also had a cross-country meet at Thetford over the weekend. Anyone that has been to those before would recall that those are super crowded events. There were only three teams there, and one team only brought two athletes. It was like a ghost town, but I will say that the event went off without a hitch. It was like a ghost town, but I will say that the event went off without a hitch as well. So we had, um, our athletes out there participating. Girl soccer is playing, um, I will say as we speak, but they're probably on their way back now, an away game. Um, we've got boys soccer going to Arlington tomorrow. Uh, they, other schools are controlling their, their fan size in various ways. We were sent enough for two tickets for each player and the coach. And then we have, and we also had JV football head out today as well, um, but I haven't got any of the results yet from any of those. And then we have home field hockey and home football coming up on Wednesday. Weather permitting, we can go weeks and weeks and weeks without rain, and then we get all the rain on one day when we want to play some sports. So we'll see how that goes. Um, I would like to speak to Jason's concern about, uh, winter sports. I also, um, am very hopeful that winter sports will happen. I will have to say that, from my own perspective, um, I also agree that October 15th seems rather early to make that call. I would say, from my own perspective, the best thing that I could send, um, advocate for is for that to hap, that decision to happen later. And the real reason is because it's so soon, we need to see how fall sports go. We need to see what the, um, the impact of fall sports is on the spread of disease, hopefully none. And we also have to see what the science has to say. So I would suggest, rather than advocating for, um, any particular outcome for winter sports, what I really want to advocate for is you can wait at least a month to make that call and not, uh, make that call on October 15th. I will say this much, um, and I know, Jason, you've got a strong interest in basketball, but when we talk about our other winter sports, I just have to say it's highly unlikely. I, I just don't see indoor track being able to happen because indoor track in the state of Vermont relies entirely on college venues for the meets. And I, as, as the parent of an indoor track college athlete, I will be very happy if those events happen. But I have to tell you, I don't see a college letting a high school come in and, and use their facility when they're on the fence for, um, using it for themselves. So that's, um, that's sports in a nutshell, both fall and winter.
Thank you, Chris. See if you've got any questions. Priscilla, we've got a hand up.
Yes, I, Chris, are there any tickets that are available for the general public? And if not, is it possibly for videotaping? The tech center may be videotaping it so that it can be put out there for people to see.
Um, without getting into the details, um, some of the challenges, well, there's videotaping and there's live streaming. So we have had conversations about video stream, videotaping, live streaming is all about internet access, which we have expanded to the outside of the building. And we have a certain amount of internet access up on Hadley Field, but in terms of field hockey and soccer fields, I don't think we've got the range on that. But we have been looking into that.
And are there tickets available for the public or not at all?
There are not tickets for the public. No, we are, we are in tight control mode on this. We need to make sure it gets done well and right. And by the way, as a high school, we're not alone on that. As I said, every other school has different methods for controlling the visiting, um, fans. And as I mentioned, as an example, we're sending our boys soccer team to Arlington tomorrow. We were given an envelope with enough tickets for each athlete to have two and for each coach to have two. So most schools are taking this, um, so highly controlled approach as they should.
David?
Thank you, Molly. Um, Jason, Terry, and I have had some discussion around this, and I explained to Jason, it's my belief that boards can always encourage, um, their administrators to, um, ask their, um, groups such as the VPA to, uh, carefully consider, um, fall sports, winter sports. And I think it's also entirely appropriate for the boards to contact, um, some of the players as well, no pun intended, such as, uh, the Agency of Education, the Governor, Department of Health, and make our concerns known. And, uh, Jason Terry is right, there's a fairly narrow window between the time this board meets again, and the time, uh, the putative decision is coming now from the VPA. However, um, I think that this board can consider whether it wants to offer guidance to AOE, uh, Department of Health, uh, Governor Scott. And, um, it's also entirely possible that as we get closer to those dates, that, uh, the VPA in particular may realize that October 15th is kind of a premature date to call the, uh, to call it, pull the trigger on whether or not we're gonna have it. So I think we should revisit this at the next meeting if we're not gonna take any action tonight, Molly. Thank you.
Anyone else? Jason, you got the floor if you want.
Uh, thank you. I wasn't paying that, Molly. I appreciate that. Um, yeah, I, I agree with David, and I don't disagree with you, Mr. Hosden either. I think it's really early. My only concern is that, especially with how fall sports came about and, you know, football, that they're going to make a decision before all the facts are in. I mean, I was told that in the summer, they were gonna look at how baseball went. Then they're gonna decide fall sports. So then they, you know, nothing happened in baseball, and then all of a sudden we're playing seven-on-seven touch football instead of traditional football. And then, you know, I don't want that to be, oh, we're gonna wait till fall sports to see how we're doing winter sports. And then the same thing that, that the last man at the rug get pulled out from underneath it. So I'm just, uh, I'm very concerned for the kids. You know, some of these kids have, this is all they have. And one of the reasons why they go to school, um, I'm lucky that my kids are not in that group because they're, for whatever reason, it has to be because of their mother, not because of me. But, uh, you know, it's the emotional and, uh, you know, the social part of school and high school sports is really important to a lot of these kids. And I can remember some of my best memories growing up with the teams I was on and, you know, all those types of competitive things that you did as a, as a, you know, as a family, as a unit. So, you know, 20 years from now, I, I hope these guys can look back at, you know, boys and girls can look back at it and say, I was on that team, I was on that team that won that state championship, and there's my banner up in the gym. You know, and everyone points to those things. So, you know, I, I think we owe it to all of the people to be leaders and push the envelope, um, against, you know, the, what, what we're being told to do. So that's just my opinion, and I appreciate letting me speak, Molly, and I thank you, everybody.
Um, what I will commit to, Jason, is, um, tomorrow I'm gonna reach out to Bob Johnson to find out who is the best person for me to, share my advocacy for putting the decision off. I think October 15th is way too early to do that, and I think they'll make a better decision with better information down the road. And, and I do want to say, for good or bad, I mean, the VPA will declare they're not the decision makers on this, that it's, that it is, um, mysterious people somewhere in Montpelier that are making these decisions, but that's why I'm gonna reach out to Bob Johnson to find out who is the right person for me to make that advocacy.
I, I agree with you, because when I, when I ran into that with football, and a lot of parents ran into that with football, you know, it was Julie Moore who decided, uh, uh, football, and she's the person who's in charge of, like, the lakes and stuff like that in Vermont. So that made no, no rhyme or reason, didn't make any sense. And then, um, and then they said it was the VPA, and then I talked to the VPA, Bob Johnson and Jay Nichols, they said it was the state. So it's just like, you know, who's in charge of what? So that's, I guess that's the parents frustration and.
Yeah, um, I share your frustration.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Chris, you're next.
All right, you haven't had enough of me yet? One more time. Update on our HVAC analysis with ME Engineering. Based on a request from a school board member, we are actively working with a company called ME Engineering to conduct an assessment of our HVAC system, that's our air handling system, which has been completely replaced within the past eight years. Two representatives from the company made an initial site visit on Monday, September 21st. We discussed the workings of the system and the history of the upgrades over the last eight years. They were given the opportunity to look at the equipment and asked many questions of Jim DeBel about the operation of the system. Overall, they gave positive initial feedback. They were particularly happy to see the open concept, which was kind of surprising, I guess. Were they, when they encounter problems, they are often, air handling problems in schools, that is, they are often related to one closed-off space in a traditional school building, getting an improper airflow while other classrooms are fine. It felt like an open concept presented a positive advantage with regard, with regard to proper airflow. The next step is for the company to produce a proposal, which we actually got today, um, for work that will ultimately tell us about the operation of our system and about the air quality in the building. I will close by noting that they cite, saw nothing in that initial visit that concerned them, which is a good starting point. They did give us a pretty detailed explanation of what they're gonna recommend. I would say that the good news is, they also said that, in their estimation, all of the cost of that will be covered by some COVID-19-related school air quality grant money. I'm not super familiar with that, but that's their observation. Questions?
Colin?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Mr. Hosden, we, that was replaced, wasn't some of that air filter on the top of the roof, wasn't that replaced like last summer?
Right, so when I say eight years, the whole thing.
Oh.
In 2013 was when we did the first half of the work, and then in 2018, we did the second half of the work. So, um, that's what gives me that eight-year timeline. But, um, as far as air handling systems in schools go, that's pretty doggone new.
Okay.
Compared to what they, what the engineers typically expect to find when they come into a 50-year-old building.
Right, right. And, um, I was just trying to thought, it was my birthday this week, so I'm getting old. Um, come back to me, because I, if not, oh, um, wouldn't this be a good discussion for, um, buildings and grounds as well? Maybe at the next, you know, maybe we could do something before, prior to the next meeting?
I think particularly the report out. I don't think we'll get a buildings and ground, I mean, they're moving rather quickly on this, but I certainly think that the information we get from them certainly would be, um, good for a buildings and ground agenda item.
Right, and you could come back to us. Okay, thanks, Chris.
Jack?
This is a bit my hobby.
You're next.
I got him.
Yes, um, this is a bit my hobby horse because I'm concerned about aerosol dispersion in open facilities, and it may be that, uh, that, uh, the, uh, folks who've looked at this are happy with what we have, but apparently they're still gonna write a report. I would ask you, Chris, if you would at least, uh, make certain that they're aware that among the concerns we have is aerosol control that I'm particularly interested, I'm particularly interested in HE filtering, because that's important today. And, uh, also, and you, which usually requires, uh, a more powerful fan. And the other item is, uh, UV, uh, units in, uh, in the ductwork, which is becoming a standard in a lot of buildings that are pushing towards, um, towards compliance in terms of, uh, COVID. And frankly, in terms of things like, uh, influenza, because it'll have a, it'll have a positive effect there. You know, I, I think that, uh, if they have a little bit more guidance as to what the issues are that we're, that the board is concerned about, they may be able to address those. And maybe, in fact, I am fairly confident that, uh, that's the kind of thing that there are grants available for, so we ought to really, uh, circle those and, uh, let them loose to, uh, address those issues.
So Jack, if you could do me a favor, um, if you could send me all of that list in an email. I had some very specific concerns from David Clark, which I just cut and paste to them and said, here are, can you ensure that your report covers this?
Yep.
And at least for the ones that David had, they said that would be no problem. So if you can do the same thing, I can send that off to them, and they'll know very specifically what you're looking to hear about.
Consider it done.
Thank you.
I got Margot.
Um, so Chris, the efficiency Vermont grant, uh, for HVAC systems is all work has to be completed by the end of the year, so that's the end of 2020. And, um, or 2020. And, um, I'll send you and Chris a more detailed document about that grant.
Good, thank you.
Priscilla?
Um, I'm concerned about the progress on this report for the simple reason that, that it was simply something that was mentioned in director's comments, that it was not something that the board has discussed or even put forth or agreed on. So if everything is being covered by grants, and I guess that's, that's fine, but we did not initiate a study on this, so I'm just trying to figure out.
Here's the good news, their visit so far.
I think it's a good thing. Don't, don't get me wrong. I think it's a great thing, but I'm just saying it wasn't initiated.
Yeah, the visit so far has cost us nothing. Um, the proposal only came in today. So, um, if there is a strong board sentiment that we are moving in a wrong direction, now would be the time to hear that.
Well, money, I, money, if there's any money involved that we're paying out, then there has to be some kind of a motion. We can't just.
How about Chris?
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's, um, this, this is tied to the efficiency Vermont's grant that Nigel was just talking about. So, um, it, it matches up, so we'll be able to, um, get grant money for that. And so, once we have the proposal, we have all the other schools in the district have already working with an engineering company through the efficiencies Vermont grant. So, and where our name is already submitted to them, that is projects we want to do. So right now, it would fall under that grant, just like the rest of the schools in the district are doing. So right now, there is no local money tied to it.
Okay, thank you. That explained it. Appreciate that.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Hosden? Chris, it looks like you're off the hook for tonight. I appreciate that. Very nice report. Thank you. We'll move on to finance, and it looks to me like Flora is on.
Yes, she is.
Yes, I am.
Okay, you're up.
Yes. Um, so, um, currently, um, I don't know if everybody got today, um, the report that you guys are gonna be getting every other week, the budget versus actual. Do you guys got the report?
I.
I can't streak to the heck, because I haven't been near a computer, but.
Okay, so, um, I worked with Leslie from E-Finance, and, um, going forward, starting today, um, everybody's supposed to receive an every other week, uh, report that is called Budget Versus Actual. That way, we all know where we're standing budget-wise and expense-wise. And that way, it avoids as well the issue that we, we previously had of not receiving the reports on time. So now you're gonna, maybe you haven't get it way too much, but at least you are up to date on whatever is going on. So, um, and as well, I would like for you guys to review it and send me emails of your feedback, so that way we could, we get to, um, update the report so it could fit, um, everybody's needs.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have questions for Flora? Priscilla?
Yeah, Flora, I never got any report. I just checked to make sure. So if you could, uh, make sure and resend that, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, so, uh, are you part of the, um, group that is, um, for the high school? When they pull the email, because this is not something that I did, so, um, from E-Finance? Okay, so I'll speak to Leslie to see what happened, because she pulled it from the, um, emails group that are created already. Okay, thank you.
Colin?
Yeah, I, I never received an email either, Flora. Um, I never received any of that information. So if you could double-check on that for me as well, that'd be great. My other question for you real quick, if I may, Molly. Is the, uh, the, the current is versus the actual, that's what you were saying, but I was wondering too, is there possibility of that breakdown, um, during the period of when, you know, when school, there was no school for the, you know, the couple of months? Just kind of the activity, if, if anything changed. Just kind of the activity, if anything changed, I imagine probably not a whole lot changed, but if we could just see those as well, that would be great, or at least me. I don't know how anybody else feels, but.
So no, the report is actually is a monthly report as to stand budget-wise, what was proposed and approved and how it's currently going to be expenses. Is that what is actually the report? It's not anything past. So it would just capture a monthly basis. So you guys know where we're standing on a monthly basis or every other week basis. That's what the report is actually.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Yes, Deb.
Yeah, it does. I don't, I don't, can't speak for everyone, but after hearing a couple of other people say the same, I did not receive the report. So I'm of the mind that no one received the report. From this, from what I can hear, I don't hear anybody saying they got it. So, thank you.
So I'll check because she did, I did get it this morning and it seemed like she had sent it to everybody, which is kind of weird, but I'll review that with her because maybe it's a system glitch. So today was the first day that it was going to start going out on a Monday basis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Flora. Any other, any other questions? Okay, I don't believe we have any committee reports, do we, Chris?
No, no committee reports.
All right, David Clark, you are up. WNESU Board Meeting Review.
Thank you, Molly. What we really did when we had our WNESU Board meetings, we checked in the second day of school opening, just to take, I was the temperature on the situation. We had reports which in many cases were quite interesting from principals. And we set a meeting again for Wednesday night, which I think will be, I think it's going to run on the long side because we have a number of topics there, which we will be discussing, including the fact that we did get the Business Office Investigation Report back from Lynn, Lynn Blackman and Menitsky. And the ESU Board, I believe will be reviewing that in executive session. And we'll need to make a decision as to whether we will release it to the public. And I have queried Pietro Lynn, asked his advice on that, haven't heard back yet. We have a number of other topics which will come up as well. And I'm looking quickly to see if I can put my fingers on them, which I can't, but nonetheless, there's quite a bit of work to do this coming Wednesday night. Whereas the last time the board met, it was basically for the purposes of review and to let the public know that we were paying attention.
Thank you. Any unfinished, excuse me, unfinished business for discussion? I don't know of any. Chris Pratt?
More, more of just an update, just to kind of add on to what David's talking about, the ESU Board meeting. I wanted to have one given heads up is that ever since we were given the, that we're moving from step two to step three, the administrative leadership team, which is all the principals, directors and stuff, have already met twice to discuss the best ways to stop bringing kids back into the buildings. And so you can expect on Wednesday night that we'll be sharing, I have each principal sharing the tentative plan to get kids back into the schools based on where we currently now. And it's, it's very very optimistic and I was very happy to see the work that's already gone into it because there's some solid plans to get as many kids back as possible and making, under the, still meeting the, the social distancing guidelines. So the administrative team has been working with that. We've been meeting and then the school task force have been meeting or will be meeting to continue to discuss what's that look like to get kids back into the schools. So I just wanted to give everyone a heads up on that. We'll be spending quite a bit of time going over that on Wednesday night where the, each principal will just give a brief outline of what we, the intentions are and then give more detailed information at the, at the board meeting. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Any new business for discussion or can't really take action, but anything, any new business coming up? Okay, there is no executive session. I would like all board members to please email me if they have something they want on the agenda. It is a lot easier than second guessing what I got on a comment or something. Email me what you want on the agenda. Everyone got an email from me last week and you're probably going to start getting them because we, the communication, it's harder doing meetings this way. And then there's a lot of, you know, backdoor talk, but the real, the real issue is we just need to get it out in the open and you gotta send emails. That's the way to have it done. And send it to me, send it to Chris Pratt, send it to Chris Hodgson. We will get it on the agenda and try to look at what you would like us to do. But until you bring it to our attention, sometimes we don't know.
Thank you, Molly, for sending that email out this last week. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. So next meeting date, Chris Pratt, I'm sorry, I'm, I don't know what it is. Is it the 12th? We gotta unmute.
As you guys are doing director's comments, I'll, I'll look and find that gate for you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so let's start director's comments. We're going to start with Jack.
Hi, I just wanted to let people know the courtesy that the when the Unified Westminster Athens Craft and Board has been getting a fair amount of comment and questions about the Halifax Reed's Borough decision by the SPE, which essentially unwound their consolidation. I expect that people will be hearing about that in future weeks in our three communities. I don't know where that's going to land, but it is an issue that may take some time and I want people to be aware of it. And if you're asked about it, just tell them to ask their local select board or ask me. This is a select board issue in large part. They're the ones that handle this issue if it goes anywhere, but it is in the air and it will affect all the boards, especially the ESU Board as well as as the Unified District Board. And we're going to just try to ride this through and see what, how we come out the other side. That's all I got.
Thank you. Margot?
I just wanted to thank, I mean, I noticed that there's a lot of public that are attending the meetings and I want to thank people for coming and particularly point out, you know, like thank Jason for bringing his concerns and ideas to the board so that we can discuss things. I think if more parents and families did that or more public, it would be beneficial for us to know how people are feeling and what ideas are really important to people. So thank you for coming.
Deb, right? Debbie, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I've unmuted. All I have is just letting people know that the Bellas Falls Fire, Fireman's Parade will, is canceled for this year due to the pandemic. And along with it, the Village Barbecue, which we're also trying to make an annual event, is also canceled and the funds remaining from last year will be forwarded to next year and hope that FY 2021 is a, is a more open, brighter year. Thanks.
Thank you. Colin?
Just, we gotta keep moving forward, all of us, and continue to work together. And I appreciate all the hard work that goes in on this board with all of us. So thank you, everybody.
Priscilla?
Yes, just applaud our district for continuing to have 0% COVID in it. It's such a wonderful thing. Even Wyndham County is only second in the state to the lowest. There's only one, Essex County has 0%, but ours has, ours has 10 per million. There's a zero per million, which is a really, really low number because we don't have a million people in Wyndham County. But anyway, since we already have students that are coming four days a week, adding the struggling students, that's at the same level that those students that need those four days. So I applaud Chris Hodgson for looking at that and working to help all of our struggling students. Thanks.
David?
Thank you, Molly. Last time we met, of course, I had some concerns about high school operation. And I want to both thank and commend Principal Chris Hodgson for following up on those diligently. And it's one of the things which for me is very reassuring about BFUHS. I do think we have a responsive leadership. Not always on the same page, but I know that my concerns always get hurt. So I appreciate that. And also want to say, Molly, thanks for holding my feet to the fire.
Steve Fine, you're next.
I don't have anything.
I'm, I'm sorry to hear that. I left you for last for that reason. I thought you'd have something very inspirational for me.
I'll try and think of something for next time.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next meeting is October 12th. Thank you, Chris, for the assistance with that. Good meeting. I'm, I'm very, I sometimes get very discouraged about being the leader of this group and because we forget that we're all professionals and that we've got a great group of administration that are working for us. And do I think director's comments ought to be all good? No, but I think it's really important. And as a leader of a big company, sometimes the leaders don't get told they're doing a good job. So it's, it's not a bad thing to remind them what a job they're doing. And I'm, I'm regaining a little strength of being the leader of this group. And thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Good night.
Meeting adjourned.
Hey, Molly.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Molly.